And then be reimbursed once our bond sales are completed in the fall.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Taylor? And I guess, Mr. Warren, if we have any questions about, I guess, specific to the site or with the clearing, would it be okay if I call on you also?
Of course.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Warren?
Yes, I do. What are the times? Now, we are looking at a possible delay in the project grading and earthworks and all that because of an endangered species, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me what-
The probability of habitat, yes, ma'am.
Got you.
We're trying to avoid that.
Okay, and so what are, what are our dates that we're looking about? How expeditiously does this need to be done?
I know that the moratorium starts on May 15th, but Mr. Warren, did you have that end date which would eliminate us having any activity on the site regarding logging from May 15th until?
It's August 15th, and basically, the trees have to come down before the bat roosting season starts, which is May 15th, so we can't, we cannot cut any trees down after that time. Of course, we're looking at the early site, starting right around the 1st of July, and that's the time period where we'll have all of our permits that will enable us to actually, you know, stump the site and do the surcharge for the building pad that we discussed in our last presentation. But in order to keep all that on schedule, we have to get those trees out of the way, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, ahead of this moratorium start. So the cost for this would normally have been in the cost of construction, so we're just moving this out to happen a little earlier to comply with this.
Okay, this is Beth Burns again. How long would it take? If you can, if I'm not mistaken, you just said you would start in July. How long would it take to get this done?
Oh, we will start, we will start the tree clearing, hopefully, within about two weeks, and then the tree clearing has to be completed by May the 15th. So what I was referencing, starting in July, is the early site package that will, you know, basically commence the start of construction, which would include the surcharging of the building pad, you know, the forest settlement. So this proposal only includes actually clearcutting the site, cutting down the trees, which has to be completed before May 15th.
Okay, Beth Burns again, and if we do not get this started immediately, what would our next window of opportunity be?
Well, we wouldn't be able to cut any trees down until August, we wouldn't be able to start until August the 15th, which, you know, would-
Which would effectively put us back three months. I'm sorry.
It would definitely set us back two to three months.
It would set us back three months. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any more questions?
Yeah, I got a question, Mr. Warren. How many days are you showing on your schedule for site, for site clearing? How many days on the activity?
Well, the project schedule isn't completely, is not built out yet. We, we have a pre-construction schedule currently, so we don't, we don't have clearing itemized yet at this point. What I'm being told by our clearing contract that is included in the proposal here, Funston, is that they can have the entire site cleared prior to May 15th. That means all the trees cut down. They may not all be hauled off the site yet, but we're, we're allowed to, you know, haul these off the site. We're just not allowed to cut trees down after May 15th. So I envision, this will take around probably four to six weeks, three to five weeks, something like that, to, to cut and remove all the trees off the site. What happens is the sawmills can get, depending on what other kind of developments are going on in the area, they could get backed up to where you can't move all of the clearcut, you know, trees to the mills, so sometimes you have to wait a little bit. So I would say the activity could be going on up to six weeks or so, from the time we start.
So you're saying thirty days, well, I'm sorry, you said six weeks. You're, you're looking at thirty, thirty working days. It's going to delay us six months. How many, how many float days do we have, or do you anticipate, be built into the schedule for site clearing?
How many float days do we have in the schedule for clearing?
Yep.
Well, the issue's not really the float in the schedule for clearing. The issue is the moratorium that Mike mentioned for the bat roosting season. So if we fail to clear the trees from the site prior to May the 15th, we can't touch anything between May 15th and August 15th. So basically, it will prevent us from doing anything on the site. That's kind of the issue. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. I would just weigh, I would just want to find out what the penalty, if we violated the moratorium, right? I mean-
Oh, they, well, yeah, they will not allow it at all. Effectively, that's when, you know, the, the potential of endangered species, of these bats, would be reproducing, right? So they won't allow us to cut any trees down during that time period. That's why we have to get it done prior to it starting. And we're pretty, I think, fortunate to be able to take these trees down ahead of the time, honestly. There is, you know, there are other parts of the state where they might not be as friendly to this conversation.
Okay. All right, yeah, I don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Springer. Anyone else?
I make a motion to approve early site clearing for the new K-8 school in the amount of $142,645.27 from capital funds to be reimbursed by Pender County after bond sales.
Can we, Mr. Chair, can we amend that motion?
Sure, go ahead.
So as long as-
Ms. Burns will- Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So as long as the county commissioner has signed the, the verbiage contract that was wrote out by Mr. Fairson.
No, sir. My motion stands as, as presented because I believe that it would take too long to get that process all the way through, and quite honestly, any other time that we've worked with the county commissioners on any promised funds, we've never had any problems. And if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Nalan and Ms. Blue have authorization from Pender County Schools and the Board of County Commissioners to intersp, to disperse funds like this already through an agreement. So I'm, I don't understand what the holdup is by having the county commissioners and the, and the Board of Education have something in writing when we already have an agreement.
Ms. Burns, what I would say is, when, when you go to buy a car, you don't go and buy a car based on what you tell somebody. You buy a car on the contract.
Yes, sir, and we already have an agreement with the county commissioners about the, about this bond money and an agreement that Ms. Nalan and Ms. Blue will work together on dispersing funds. And this is not like buying a car. This is not a purchase agreement. This is a, an agreement about fund transfer.
I haven't heard, I haven't personally heard from any of the county commissioners or seen anything from the county commissioners, and that's what, that's what my problem is.
Mr. Cordero, moreover, the agreement that Ms. Burns is referencing was not included in our agenda packet, and I would ask at this time, if staff could explain why that agreement was omitted?
I wasn't, I wasn't given anything. That was not, that was not-
We've been referring to an agreement, and I have not seen it, and I don't think it was included in the agenda packet, so I'm asking if we can look at it before voting on this.
Oh.
Well, what, the, the agreement that I'm referring to, Mr. Cordero, was an agreement that we talked about in open session back when we started the bond issue. It was already discussed whenever the bond was approved. It was already discussed that Ms. Nalan and Ms. Blue would have the ability to transfer funds from the county commissioners to Pender County Schools. Now, I can't recall if you were already on the board at that point, but I'm sure that if there were any emails or anything, that it could be sent to you.
Mr. Cordero, if we already have the authority to transfer these funds, why is this becoming, why is this coming before the board at all?
Because it's greater than $30,000.
I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor, could you repeat that, please?
I believe this is coming before the board because we are fronting the funding out of our capital account first with the agreement that has been shared with an email from Ms. Blue saying that she had approval to refund us for the purchase.
Mr. Chair, this is Ken Smith. Can I speak for one moment, please?
Sure.
Could I, the attorney is able to speak on any of this? I think that, being he's our legal representation and has dealt with this matter, I'd feel more comfortable, Brandon, if you would please, would you answer any questions, concerns, since this is something that would be, that you've dealt with, that you've talked about, that maybe you could give some clarification?
Sure, Mr. Smith, this is Brandon Furson. The, first thing I would say is, the, the draft resolution that I sent out was the idea of memorializing what I understand to be an agreement between the county and the school board for the reimbursement of the $142,000. The, the question that, you know, proposed, you know, resolution sort of revolved around the concept of, of the county agreeing to reimburse and memorializing that with a resolution. It's, it's a singular resolution. It wasn't a resolution for the county to sign. It was just for the Board of Education. Second is the, the question about an existing agreement between the Pender County Schools and the county commission for how the funds are transferred once the bonds are sold. I'm, I'm trying to recall that document right now. I do understand that Ms. Blue has sent Ms. Nalan an email saying that the, the county is going to provide that money, and I have, for, for very, you know, longstanding reasons, I do not have any reason to doubt that the county is not going to reimburse you for the fund you extend. That was the way it was done at the earlier bond. That, that part is not in doubt, but there was a, a request for me to put together a resolution to memorialize our understanding. I also had a, was there any other questions? If there's a specific agreement, I'm, I'm trying to locate that regarding-
I, I guess the-
Distribute.
The question I'm asking, Mr. Fairson, has this a process, has this been done in the past since you've been our legal, and do you have any concerns about this agreement?
About, so, so, in the past, what has happened is without, with and without a sales tax agreement in place, the county has reimbursed expenses for bond projects before, that whenever bonds were sold, those expenses were reimbursed. So there's, there's not, if, if history is the guide, it's been done with a, with a sales and use tax agreement in place and without it in place. But the, the concept of the school board expending money and then having those funds reimbursed by the county has been done. If that answers your question, Mr. Smith.
I guess the question is, is, so the answer is, this has been done in the past. This is not something that abnormal then?
No, it's, it's not abnormal. But, but there, but there'd be a request for the school board to supply the money, and then the county will reimburse you once the bonds are sold. No, that, that is not a new process.
So with this, with this resolution that looks like would come from, only from us-
That's, that's correct.
Is there a way to-
Memorializing your understanding.
So if this was incorporated into the motion, do you see a way that it would delay anything? I mean, or, I mean, or would we have to vote? This would have to be a separate vote, correct?
I mean, I think it depends on the motion maker. If, if the motion maker wants to include the resolution in the approval to, to do this and do it pursuant to the resolution, that's one thing. But if, if they want to address the resolution separately, because one, one is authorizing the work, which is the $142,000 to do the work. The second is expending the money upfront and then being reimbursed by the county for that once bond sells, bond sales are complete. Does that make sense? So it's the, the two separate issues. Could they be combined? Yes, they could be combined, but that, that's the way I, I think about it. It's sort of the two different elements of it. There's the authorization for this early site clearing package of $142,000, and then secondarily, the resolution regarding how the Board of Education memorializes its understanding with the county about reimbursement.
So the resolution then would in fact have to be voted on separately, is what I'm hearing?
I, I think, I think that's up to the motion maker, Mr. But I think-
But if it was included with, so if it was included with the motion, does that mean that I could print it out right here and sign it right here after it was all approved as to not hold up anything and to, as you said, memorialize this just to have something in writing? Because that may help to alleviate some concerns.
Mr. McFerson, Beth Burns, would this have to go with, so this is just for our, just, this is just for Pender County Board of Education. This is nothing that would have to be approved by the county commissioners to hold this up any further. This is just something for our records, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But it is done in public so that there's-
It is.
A record for the public to see, too.
Okay, to move this along, I'll accept the friendly amendment then.
All right, so Ms. Burns has made, so your motion is to, this would also include approving-
The previous motion, and I will also accept the friendly amendment given by Mr. Springer to accept this.
All right, if it passes, I'll sign, I'll print it and sign it right here, so it'll be done. In fact, two of them, and we'll deliver a, a copy of it to the county commissioners. How about that? Mr. Springer, does that, I think your second, or, no, you, you did, you did not have a second. You were, you were questioning. So right now, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Burns that now also includes the inclusion of this resolution, the title of which is Resolution to Fund Reimbursable Site Clearing Expenses Associated with a New K-8 School.
Yeah, so, so as long as they sign it on, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, and I, I will print it and sign it while I'm here in person right now. When we're done. Okay, so Ms. Burns has made a motion that now includes this written resolution to have a record of it, and so do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, Tom.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Springer has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Beth Burns, aye.
Right. Mr. Springer. Okay. Mr. Smith. All right, Mr. Cordero. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I think that's all we have. Mr. Warren also, did, did anyone have any more questions for Mr. Warren before he leaves or like to say anything? All right, Mr. Warren, I appreciate you coming.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
Take care. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to closed session. We have a motion for closed session.
I move that the board enter into closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319 and to consider matters relating to personnel matters. The board will also enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Ken Smith, I second the motion.
Mr. Smith is seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Beth Burns, aye.
Ken Smith, aye.
All right.
Mr. Cordero, aye.
All right. And Mr. Springer.
Mr. Springer, so that.
Okay, that's unanimous. Before everyone goes, Dr. Breedlove has printed the resolution for us, and I am signing it right now, and I will personally take a copy of this and deliver it to the county manager myself tomorrow morning when they get back to work. All right, we're now in closed session. Thank you. All right, we're now in closed session, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to... do you all... listen, do we need to make a motion to come out of closed? Yes. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make the motion. This is Beth Burns.
Ms. Burns has made the motion. Do we have a second?